Peter Quag.
Deirdre Perotti.
Karen Anger.
Gary Chisman.
Ben Harmon.
All right. Public input, 10 minutes is reserved for public input, two minutes per person. A person may speak only once. All participants wishing to address the select board during public comments may do so in person or via Zoom by virtually raising their hands. Speaker must identify themselves by name and street address. The select board may not deliberate or vote on matters discussed during public comment, but are not on the agenda.
Anybody in the public has a comment, please raise your hand on Zoom or approach the podium in person.
Doesn't look like we have anyone.
See no names.
All right, reports and announcements, and we'll start with the town administrators' update and town announcements.
Yep.
So first, I want to thank Marty Lowery for the plantings as you walk in. She did that under her own goodwill, and she does not want reimbursement for the flowers. Thank you for taking care of that. I also want to thank for Susa for getting the COA parking lot done. The COA utilizes the school parking lot over across from the COA building that had some potholes was an understatement, so he got that done. I know it's school property. I don't know if you're, probably everybody got the alert earlier when the 911 was down, then it went back up again, but you know, police and fire did coordinate and was going to have both facilities staffed into the night if needed so that public safety resources were available at their local business line at a local level. But luckily, the state got everything figured out and back online. This, so this, I'm just going to go through the board and committee openings, anticipated openings. So we're doing it a little bit differently than what we have in the past, generally over the last two years anyways. The board has filled anticipated openings with reappointments, or if there was an anticipated vacancy, they would fill with a person that, a new person that was interested effective July 1. However, over the last week or so, we've gotten, we've gotten some interest trickling in across a couple of different seats, and we have some unknowns as to whether some seats are going to become vacant or not because it's not the end of the term for these particular seats, however they may become vacant. So then, but so we're proposing and have changed the agenda to reflect that, that the board will be asked to appoint only routine appointments for uncontested seats. So the individual will be filling their, their seat that they're currently in, in that we're going to set up, we'll do a social media push similar to what we did with the CPC opening, and set a hard deadline for the public, so it will be July 5. We'll put it out with, you know, the seats that are open along with the anticipated seats that were open, and give everyone kind of a final chance, everyone being in the residence, to reach out, express their interest. We'll compile all the names, cover letters and resumes, and have any contested seats before the board at that meeting on July, on July 8. So we felt like that was a fair way to go about it, so that everybody has the opportunity to express their interest, everybody knows that there's a deadline, it's not just kind of a floating rolling date with anticipated appointments being made tonight. So currently, the way we see it, we expect the Affordable Housing Trust to have one seat, Cemetery Commission, one seat, Community Preservation Committee, one at-large seat, Conservation Commission, one seat, Council on Aging, four seats, Hamilton-Wenham Cultural Council, eight seats, but that includes Hamilton residents, right? No, that's all. Eleven, okay, so eight on the Cultural Council, Historic Commission, one, Veterans Committee, one, Wenham Human Rights, one, WISH, two at-large, and one on the Board of Appeals. So I guess just folks and residents to be on the lookout this week for social media push and the light board to encourage people to get involved in their local government and any interest to be in by July 5, which is a Friday. That's all I have for tonight.
So we can review how they actually apply?
Review.
Email to Michelle or use the website.
Yeah, so right, email, we have a portal on the website. Select Board's office is, you know, always open, so give us a call, shoot us an email, email your interest to Michelle, really any, any way you can give us the information. We try to make it easy, and on the contested seats, we'll compile, you know, generally it's a letter of interest or a resume for the select board to review, invite the individuals to come in and meet the select board, either virtually or in person, or can ask some questions, ultimately arrive on the individual that they would like to appoint. And that's all I have for updates this evening.
You want to do one?
Sure. Mine is a sad note this evening. I would like to acknowledge the passing last week of longtime Wenham resident and Army veteran, Mr. Don Burnett. Mr. Burnett passed away just shy of his 89th birthday tragically in a motorcycle accident. Born in Danvers, he lived 60 years in the town of Wenham, operating Burnett's garage on Maple Street. The garage was opened by his father 75 years ago and is something of a local landmark, as was the sight of Mr. Burnett riding in and out on his motorcycle on more days than not. Mr. Burnett was the 1962 champion of the Daytona 200-mile motorcycle race, winning in a photo finish with the crowd on their feet for the last 10 laps, reportedly a thrilling race, which you can read about online in the April 1962 issue of American Motorcycling. Mr. Burnett is survived by his three children and three grandchildren and will be sorely missed. He was a lovely, kind man and a wonderful neighbor. Our deepest condolences go out to his son Dave, his granddaughter Amanda, and the rest of the Burnett family. We will miss seeing Mr. Burnett ride off on his motorcycle into the sunset.
Um, wow. Cut back to focus.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we, good Pride picnic last Sunday. Once the weather cleared, it was pretty well attended. Band was the best band they've ever had by far. And we have Juneteenth tomorrow. Right? So hopefully we'll get a lot of people to attend. Personally, I'll be traveling, and that's where we are. That's where I am. Anything else?
Just to reiterate, we had a great, we had a great Pride picnic. We had a good turnout, and to follow up on veterans' updates, we have a flag, what is, is it, it's not.
Flag day is Friday.
Flag day is Friday, and so it was rescheduled, the event is going to be taking place at Pingree Park at 6:00 PM, where people can come down with their used or need-to-be. What is the correct term?
Disposed.
Disposed? Just didn't want to use that term, but. Yes, okay. Disposed of correctly, all the scouts will be there along with the, the police and fire. And it's, it's open to both towns.
Okay. We will not the correspondents.
Can I add one?
Yeah, yeah.
So tomorrow with a heat wave, the COA building will be open as a cooling center from 1:00 to 7:00 PM.
Ben?
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to mention the, the Juneteenth commemoration that took place last Wednesday, the 12th, at Town Hall. It was co-sponsored by the North Shore Juneteenth Association, which I think was the primary reason why we celebrated it a week early because that organization. Thankfully, it's very busy because so many towns, you know, across the state are now, you know, actively recognized on Juneteenth in ceremonies. So it was, it was a very good ceremony, there was a, I thought a pretty healthy turnout. We had the Chief Napoli there, and I'm sorry, Deirdre, Karen, you may remember the name of, of the other officer who was, who was there and raised the flag with the chief.
Deputy Chief. Deputy Chief Jason Lucantoni.
Yes. Right. Deirdre gave some remarks which were excellent, and then we had, there were some other speakers as well from the Juneteenth Association. Senator Tarr spoke as well and gave excellent remarks, so all around, it was a really nice event, I thought.
Agreed. Moving on.
We should move on.
Correspondents? So the correspondents, the board, I was in receipt from two emails from Courtney Ashwood, received on 6/17 and 6/18 of 2024. It was within the 48-hour window, so we commended the agenda to include it, to let the board acknowledge receipt of said email and discuss any next steps or how they would like to respond either now or in the future. So we did, we did take a look at our internal financial records and say that we did not use any, there was no appropriation made or money, monetary contribution to the Pride picnic from the Town of Wenham taxpayer funds. However, there was a contribution through the Cultural Council, which is, the accounting is done in the funds received from the state funded through the lottery. They give a small amount of money to the Cultural Council, which is the Joint Cultural Council of Hamilton-Wenham, and they did contribute $1,000 to the Pride picnic, but they were not local funds utilized, raised through taxation or other means.
You said 1,000, I thought it was 100 in the email.
It was 1,000, I already sent the direction to the email.
Okay, so we move on.
Oh, are we going to put this on a future agenda or?
Ben has a question.
Ben has a question?
Yeah, maybe just picking up on what Gary just mentioned. I think it may be worth having a future agenda item around a different topic that we've touched on in various points, which is the Town of Wenham officially as a sponsor of, of private events. It's on the, the website for the Pride picnic listed in the Town of Wenham and the Town of Hamilton as, I believe it described as, as in-kind sponsors of, of the picnic, and I think it sounds like based on the $1,000 in state funds from the Mass Cultural Council that were approved and distributed through the Hamilton-Wenham Regional Cultural Council, that it probably would have been more accurate for the website to list the Hamilton-Wenham Cultural Council as, as the sponsor, which, you know, is a, to the extent that was an error, I think it's an understandable error, but it does, in my mind, raise the question of the extent to which the Town of Wenham proper would be a, a sponsor of really any private event. I'm not sure that we, that we do typically do that, or if we do, it's probably something worth discussing in terms of, would the town itself be the sponsor of any, of any private event? I know we obviously approve the funding, and we did, for example, for the Juneteenth flag raising, and I think for the Pride flag, flag raising as well, but those, those were official town events that we, you know, have supported and all unanimously agreed to continue supporting, and so an expenditure of that type seems perfectly appropriate because it's a public event. But should the town be a, either willingly be a sponsor of any private event or be described as such by, by organizers of their private events, that may be some, an agenda item that's worth adding to a future meeting in my, in my mind, if, if my colleagues agree.
It's worthy.
Yes, I think, you know, we've touched on several different points there, both the, a policy on official use of the town seal or town flag, as well as, you know, clearly defining what, where the boundary line between private and public events are, as well as perhaps clarifying some of the committee charges to make sure that those are better defined, so I would be in support of bringing this up as a topic again.
Courtney has her hand right now.
Good knowledge. Courtney would like to speak.
Okay, Courtney, Courtney Ashwood, you've got the floor. Please identify your name and address, please.
Oh, here we go. Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I just, I had my hand up, but Ben pretty much covered really what was the point of my email to you. I did just want to state publicly, my email was not related specifically to that event. It was, where do we draw the line on public involvement in a private event? And, you know, how is that process defined? How is it vetted? So I really appreciate everything that has already been said here tonight. That really was the main purpose of my email to you guys.
All right, great. Thank you, Ben. Should we move on?
Yep.
All right. Let's, a discussion and potential vote on a one-day liquor license for First Church in Wenham on August 10, 2020, 24, from 5:30 PM to 11:00 PM. Discussion? Discussion? All right. I move to approve the one-day liquor license for First, for the First Church in Wenham on August tenth, twenty twenty-four, from five thirty P M to eleven P M.
Second.
Okay, shall we take a vote or discussion? Nope, take a vote. All right, Peter, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Karen, yes.
Karen, yes.
Ben, yes.
All right, so then this would be Deirdre.
Okay, so we're going to move these all in one batch, correct?
Yeah, so I think what went down the pass and worked well was, um, you state the first part of the motion, move to a point.
Yep.
And then read through the boards and the names that are listed.
Yep.
And then you can end with, where we get it.
The dates. Okay, the agenda item is B, Board and Committee reappointments, uh, which Steve explained a bit about in the Town Administrator's Report. So I move to appoint the following people to the following committees. Erica Chiampa and Corey Sprague to the Affordable Housing Trust. Alden Drake to the Community Preservation Committee. Leoma Stronzi and Kenneth Whitaker to the Conservation Commission. Mary Beth Ting to the Hamilton-Wenham Cultural Council. Daniel Curran to the Hamilton-Wenham Joint Recreation Committee. Kirsten Alexander and Kelly Schmidt to the Historic District Commission. Gunther Anger, Ernest Ashley, and Ann Weeks to the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Albert Dodge, Michael Lucy, and Dean Peterson to the Veterans Committee. Chief Kevin De, De Napoli, excuse me, to the Wenham Human Rights Committee. And Kelly Schmidt to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Actually, that's not quite correct. The terms are staggered.
Twenty-seven.
Affordable housing is only two-year terms. Everything else is three years.
Everything else is three years, okay. So, ending June thirty, twenty twenty-seven for all except... Which one?
Affordable Housing Trust.
Affordable Housing Trust, thank you. Twenty twenty-six, all right. There we go.
Second.
Shall we vote?
Uh, I do have a quick question. Do I need to abstain from G?
Oh, 'cause of your husband?
There is someone I like very much on, on, uh, that list. Just want to make sure that I'm allowed to say yes. If not, I urge the select board to give him a job.
I think it's fine.
We'll toss the lawyer. Ben, do you have an issue?
The lawyer.
Um, so, without, you know, not acting as town council here, but my, my feeling on it is that it'd be probably more prudent to abstain on that one, Karen.
That's what I thought.
Okay, so. I voted yes, you voted yes?
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
I will vote yes with the exception of G.
Okay.
Great.
All right, we're on to public safety.
All right, uh, this public safety, uh, police appointments.
I'm sorry, can I just, hey, Ben, I'm just gonna warn you that we're gonna do public safety fire appointments, and would ask that you read that, please?
For, uh, for police or for fire?
For, for fire, but I'm just giving you the heads up, because Gary.
Sure, yeah, thank you, yeah, I'll be ready for that.
Okay, then, uh, move to appoint, uh, Chief Kevin De, De Napoli, Deputy Chief Luca Tony as, um, Police Sergeants Michael Misick, David Marsh, Chad LeBrie, Full-Time Patrol Officers John Phillips, Bart Connors, Michelle Princi, Matthew Krikorian, Tyler Salos, David LaConte, Thomas Korzinski. As Police Part-Time Officers Brian Pratt, Christopher Sanborn, Stephen Farinato, David Ferry, Lawrence Nester, John Fritas, Kevin Kelly, and Wesley Isidoro. As a Special Officer, Christopher J. Machane, and Inventory Control Specialist Michael F. Perry for a period, uh, beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second?
Yeah.
All right, shall we vote? Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
Ben doesn't have this motion.
All right. Public Safety Fire Appointments.
And, uh, Ben, we're actually gonna, can you share? We're gonna share the motion with you, we're gonna.
Oh, I have it, I have it in front of me.
We had a slight amendment.
It's slightly different, okay, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, she just got the agenda up, which is, which is what I have, is that, is that what the motion should be?
Can you see that?
Can you see?
I'm just seeing this, the same agenda that I, that I have, since it's been changed.
So you have the one line out under B?
Yeah, right, okay. I move to appoint the following individuals. Fire Chief Stephen Kavanaugh. Forest Warden Stephen Kavanaugh. Deputy Chief Fire Prevention Officer Jeffrey Baxter. Oil Burner Inspector Jeffrey Baxter. Firefighter Call Captain John Joyce. Firefighter Call Lieutenant Sean McCarthy. Next, Call Lieutenants Matthew Bean, Michael Binns, Gary Blaney, and Anthony Nikas. Call Firefighters Richard Bertoni, Denzel Boucher, Milton Gotro, Les Kernan, Marissa Mead, Ellis Nimmo, John O'Grady, Michael Schroeder, and John Ward. Call Provisional Firefighters Sean Bresnahan, Michael Burke, James Calatry, Matt Dickman, Brett Donovan, Kevin Philbrook, Kerry Termain, Ryan Snowden, James Romeos, and Connor Shacht. EMT Operator Charles Hoffman. And finally, Fire Chaplain Sean Bendigo. My apologies to anyone's last name I mispronounced.
Second.
For term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
All right.
Second.
Second, all right. Okay, we'll vote. Peter, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
And I just want to add, I just had a note passed to me from the, the town clerk. She's looking to hold a group swearing-in on Monday, July first, four thirty to six in the Select Board Room right here. So if any, uh, board or committee members or public safety that needs to be sworn in, um, that's out there listening, you can come here. We're, we're also, we've sent an email already around internally to all boards and committee members. So you should have that in your inbox today. But just a reminder, Monday, July one, four thirty to six.
All right. Move B.
Karen?
Town Administrator to provide overview on recently implemented, implemented management and non-management performance review tool.
Yep, so this was a stated goal at our last goal meeting, was to re-implement, uh, some sort of performance, uh, analysis tool for managerial and non-managerial staff. So what we did, uh, last summer, coming out of the meeting, we, where I drafted this, um, on the second page of, of the Performance Management Tools, is they both share the same goals and objectives page. Uh, so this really is to, really to serve two functions. One, it will help when we're drafting our new budget document and we're looking at goals and objectives and tying it to dollars. And two, it serves as, you know, kind of, uh, uh, a starting base in each fiscal year. So this, the goals and objectives gets filled out in July at the beginning of each fiscal year. And then when we sit down again at the end of June, we look back and say, all right, you know, we set these goals and objectives, uh, professional development goals, um, things like that. And, uh, how, you know, and then how, how did you do over the last year? What did you accomplish? And then that's paired with the more traditional, um, you know, rating one through five across a number of categories. And those combined will give a overall, uh, performance rating. So we did that with this, goals and objectives was done by everybody last year in September. And we're currently reviewing, I've gone through and, you know, done my own rating, uh, myself. And now we're setting up appointments with each individual to go over those ratings and give feedback. Goals and objectives.
Looks good to me.
All right.
Let's, uh, move on to F.
Yep.
Discussion and potential vote to authorize merit pay.
Yep. So this is tied to this, so last, up until last year, the town was awarding, well, it had a zero to two percent merit pay range. So for three years prior to my first year. The, and due to, you know, lack of, or managerial turnover, the town was unable to perform any performance reviews over, you know, probably a four or five-year period. And during that period, it was, everybody was awarded two percent COLA and a two percent merit, all non-union folks. The board asked me to look into that and felt that I'd be more comfortable with an average merit of about one percent. So after completing, you know, everybody's performance, um, uh, tools, you know, and I'm, I'm here to ask the board tonight that, you know, we allow anybody with a rate, right, everybody, I'm not sure I like the idea of splitting a small pool amongst, you know, folks who, everybody has worked really hard. Everybody's done, you know, literally, everybody's done a really good job this year. I feel like it'd be splitting hairs, trying to be, you know, you get three-quarters of a percent, you get a percent, you get a percent and a quarter. Right, we live in the public domain, people talk, you know, it goes in the paper. Uh, you can back into who got what, and then the question's like, well, how, you know, how can you say this person's better or worse, right? So I'm asking the board that, you know, nobody got anything below a three, which is satisfactory performance. Um, and I'm asking for anyone three and above to get a one percent merit. So that achieves the board's goal of reducing two percent to one percent for non-union staff.
Discussion? Gary?
I think too that the, uh, two percent, as well as the managerial a, absence at time, was also a reflection of the COVID period, that we knew that, uh, people were under stressful work conditions, and we just put it at the one set. So I'm in agreement here to accept Steve's recommendation going forward.
For one percent?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a small pool, just.
The H R person says yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll take it. Uh, Ben, Karen?
Oh, that's me. Um, I move to adopt a one percent merit increase for non-union, full and regular part-time town of Wenham staff for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Shall we vote? Peter says yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Ben, yes.
All right, discussion and potential vote to request the Finance Advisory Committee to review updated financial policies and make recommendation, make recommendations of action to the select board. Discussion?
I can talk to, I can talk to this, I just. All right, so this, um, this was also a goal last year. So, you know, I want to, I want to thank Jeff for, you know, helping assemble this. So what, what you have in your, well, that was sent out, it's in your packet, but it was sent out, uh, also on Monday night. Uh, essentially, it's a framework that was developed by the Collins Center back in probably two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen. A number of North Shore communities participated in Community Compact Grant through the state. And this document was drafted. That framework was adopted by the town of Danvers in two thousand nineteen. It was instrumental in the town of Danvers becoming a triple-A rated community for the first time in its history. Uh, S and P has commented on this document in particular, and, and a couple of the communities that have documented as being, you know, comprehensive. Uh, and they really like the, the document, so it's something that they're looking increasingly or waiting increasingly more, yeah, increasingly is having defined financial policies. So this isn't really a procedure book, it's policies that will help guide financial decisions uh, in, for the town in the future. So. We did, you know, we did a number of things he, here that, you know, they weren't stated goals, but we've been kind of, I've been talking about it since we started, and we've been working to integrate them into the budget process. We have certain thresholds and targets that will help drive this decision-making. We, you know, unofficially, uh, well, we didn't adopt them, but we implemented them this year with, you know, with Jeff's help, has been a massive help, you know, to have, to have him, his expertise in the finance department, and, you know, you know, now that we have staff in there to have the capacity to look at and do the modeling required to reach these targets, we've been able to, you know, implement, you know, a target for stabilization fund, five to seven percent of expenditures, uh, target free cash regeneration of four to six percent of expenditures, uh, integration of a five-year capital plan, uh, and utilizing that and, you know, budgeting and anticipated costs and future costs. Uh, you know, targeted capital, annual capital expenditures as a percentage of, of, of a percentage of total expenditures to help, um, avoid any deferred maintenance. Uh, you know, free cash net appropriation targets coming out of town meeting of one to two percent to ensure we have a net appropriation balance rolling into the next year. Uh, one-time revenue restrictions, you know, it goes on to further establish, uh, you know, debt threshold, appropriate debt thresholds, O P E B funding strategies, uh, once we've finalized our pension liabilities, uh, you know, and then it did also incorporates best practices for cash management, personnel costs, grant management, procurement, Massachusetts procurement law. So it does a number of things, and some of them might seem obvious, but they're important to have written down and have the document to, to help guide us. So this is a draft that I wanted to present to the board. The board, we would ask the board to, you know, kind of give its, its blessing at this stage in the game, uh, and send it to the FinCom for their review and ultimate recommendation for action and any edits, uh, from the Finance Advisory Committee in the future.
Sounds good to me.
Yes, surely it's a big step as we mordenize our finance processes in town. And, uh, thanks, Jeff, for all the expertise. So, uh, we're gonna send this to FinCom, and, uh, any individual edits or questions go to Jeff or to you?
Yeah, I think, right, Kenny, or if you have me now, I know it's a little bit short, but yeah, we'll definitely, it'll be a, a living document over the next couple of months as we finalize everything.
So we're looking to get this in place prior to the budget seasons kicking off, right? That'd be good.
All right.
Hold on.
Just in terms of timing, I'm assuming the Finance Committee is gonna have two meetings in probably the next three or four weeks that are largely dedicated to year-end transfers and helping us tidy things up for year-end. Um, so I would imagine, you know, Finance Advisory wouldn't really address this until sometime in roughly August, but certainly it's time to have it ready for the budget season.
All right. I move to request the Finance and Advisory Committee to review updated financial policies and make recommendation of action to the select board.
Second.
Vote. Peter says yes.
Deidreus.
Karen, yes.
Karen, yes.
Ben, yes.
All right, discussion and potential vote to select a special town meeting date and venue. A lot of people are hanging on this.
So.
You have a date, right?
Yeah. I'm just looking at the calendar here, make sure I get it right. All right, November 16th is the date to be arrived at, how does that work? There was not a lot of flexibility in the date, the elections. And Jewish holidays, and we wanted it to be early enough so that we could set a rain date, or if there was, if it was to fail and we needed to go try to go back to town meeting, for whatever reason with amendments, would have time to go back, call an emergency special town meeting and go back before the first of the year, which is the compliance that.
And we're putting a hold on Bukeur and the Bennett Center.
Right.
Oh, for venue?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So right now, we're aiming the Bukeur. We think we can get 500 chairs in there, and we're going to be putting out this week, actually, a, like a monkey, a survey monkey, just to try to get an indication on how many folks plan on attending. We're just gonna, we'll probably have to phrase it something catchy, like, you know, MBTA zoning, you know, be something that people are aware of, and see if they're going to come, because if it looks like it's going to exceed 500, then we're probably going to try to rent some space from Gordon College, one of their larger meeting rooms.
Or their athletic facility.
There it is.
Yeah.
What day of the week is it?
Saturday.
Saturday.
So it's a morning? Did you set a time?
Uh, well, that was, we don't have to, we're not at the mercy of Hamilton, so we could do it in the morning if that's what the board decides.
At 10:00, something like that?
Okay.
Civil? I move to set November 16th as the date for the special town meeting at either Bukeur or the Bennett Center at Gordon College.
Second.
Shall we vote? Do you have a question, Karen?
No, I was more looking to Ben if he, if that date works for him.
It does. Thank you.
Okay, we'll vote. Peter says yes.
Deidreus.
Karen, yes.
Karen, yes.
Ben, yes.
All right, great. All right, and Steve, you don't have to talk about this. We should have put Ernest on the agenda first. He's been sitting there for about an hour or more.
Apologies. We should have put you on first, so apologies for having you wait. What?
So, presentation from Ernest Ashley regarding opening the bid process for West Wenham Park.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. Ernest Ashley, Nine Foster Street, Wenham. I'm the Chair of the Open Space Recreation Committee and newly appointed for a three-year term. Thank you very much. Also, I'm Chair of the Water Commission. What I'd like to talk to you about tonight is the West Wenham Park project, which we need the Select Board approval to move forward to a bidding phase. We, next slide, please. Okay, we recognized as part of the Open Space and Recreation Committee, after doing a inventory of our resources, that the Wenham Park was inadequate parking, poor conditions of some of the playing fields, no universal access for wheelchairs and other things, there is no shelter currently there, no toilet facilities, and it's kind of a steep hill to get up there. And it has a good location adjacent to the Cedar Ponds Wildlife Sanctuary. So we identified that this is a target property that we could put some effort into to have a meaningful improvement. Next slide, please. So basically, the Open Space and Recreation Committee had a plan developed in 2019 with some public participation. And one of the goals was included to improve and maintain existing parks and playgrounds to provide a mix of uses for broad range of needs and interest, including all age groups and people with disabilities. And so this facility was highlighted as one that could use our help. We performed a feasibility study with a grant from the Community Preservation Act. The BSC Group was our landscape architect, and they are now currently in the process of the final engineering design phase. We did outreach in terms of initially with the Open Space and Recreation Plan, there was a survey, and then as well, there was a survey and some community meetings via Zoom and, and to identify what the public might want in this park. And so BSC Group gave us a lot of options, we had multiple meetings, and we developed a plan. Next slide, please. So this plan includes making the park accessible, and that will be improving the roadway from 97 up around the hill to the side adjacent to Cedar Ponds, which will allow wheelchair or a car access to the top of that hillside. There will be extra parking spaces, and those were designed to minimize the amount of pavement and have gravel for the other parking spaces. It would create a picnic area, and we have a plan for a pavilion, and then resurfacing the current sport court, which would keep the pickle, the tennis court and provide lines for four pickleball courts. We identified a pump track in lieu of things like a skateboard park or something like that, as an ideal addition to this park, that it would target a underserved population between the elementary school playground set and the people who are now driving the cars, somewhere in the middle school to early high school age. Correct? There's already a half basketball court that will be redone. And then the plan causes for added additional facilities. We've even had some suggestions of a sand volleyball court, a bocce court, horseshoe courts, other things that could be accommodated on this park with very little additional cost. So this is the plan that has been put forward in several instances where people could comment on it. And I believe our next slide, please. Yeah, this has more detail. You can see the sport court has a full tennis court as the painted surface with the overlay lines as the pickleball court. And that was a discussion during our last meeting. And then you can see the roadway going up to the parking area. A pavilion is identified above four of the picnic tables, and then an area where we might have memorial bricks and other things, and several people have also identified they would like to donate a bench or something as a memorial up there. So this is our current plan that would have to go out for bids on the construction project. Next slide, please. Yeah. So again, the discussion about the sport court, and we did have a couple of comments of concern about the pickleball courts, and we feel like we've come to a pretty good understanding. It is definitely something that has been in demand, but there was also a request to maintain the tennis court there. So our plan would be to have the tennis court net still be up and functional, and these pickleball nets that you see here are a little bit more robust than the ones that get constructed every time somebody wants to play. They have rollers so that they actually can be moved off to the side as they are still set up and moved back in place when pickleball would be used. And again, the half basketball court would be repaved and relined. Next slide, please. Example of some of the benches, benches in the middle as the example that is at the Cedar Pond Wildlife ADA Accessible Trail right now. This other one is a little bit larger. And then the area around the pavilion would be where we would have space for bricks. Next slide, please. Then, we've had some internal discussions when we approached the Community Preservation Act, asked for some funding. The first ask was for a pavilion. That one seems a little tall, but it was a wooden structure similar to that. Other designs are for either a gabled metal building, as you see in the lower right, or a single slope metal structure, or can be either wood, and we're kind of in final questions on, on the design of that. But we'd be open to any suggestions. And last slide, please. So again, the Town Council indicated that this was something that the Recreation Committee needed to bring to the Select Board to be able to get an approval or authorization to go out to bid at the stage that we are right now. Questions?
Looks great.
I think it's really good.
Then I think we would need a motion to approve the committee going out for bid. Is that correct, Keith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
Move to approve the Open Space and Recreation Committee to open the bid process for West Wenham Park.
Second.
Okay, votes. Peter says yes.
Deidreus.
Karen, yes.
Karen, yes.
Ben, yes.
Thank you, Ernest.
Thank you, Ernest.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
It's going to be a huge improvement to that end of Wenham. It's really great.
I'll leave that up, because then you can just, just go to the.
Okay, discussion and potential vote to adopt public comment policy. Any edits?
I have one now.
So I think, just so quickly, is, I think this captured what the board discussed at the goal setting meeting. The only change I put in there, and it was really just kind of a placeholder, was a listening session in the board kind of left it as they expressed to be allowing people to speak longer than two minutes. And there was also with one and two, there was also some discussion as a one-minute restriction instead of the two minutes, but that didn't seem clear that we arrived on an actual number of minutes.
I think two's fine.
But it did seem to be the consensus that that person would only speak once because the multiple speaking chances would increase, you know, maybe our limits or. Go ahead, Karen.
So on the listening session?
Yeah.
So I think, as in the others, the whole purpose is for the Select Board to receive information, not to see a debate between parties out there. So I would stick with the two-minute presentation, and the Chair always has the flexibility there anyhow.
It's just a listening session.
Yeah, on the listening session.
Instead of five, two.
Yes. Just make it easy across the board, two minutes everywhere, speak once.
Can we meet in the middle on that? If somebody comes with slides?
Well, that's always up to the Chair, can.
Yeah.
Right.
If someone's just going to get up and talk, then two minutes. Two minutes is a long time. I think you can get your point across pretty quickly.
I do think you want to be careful in who, right, to have a consistent time limit. And if someone has a presentation, then they can request to be on the agenda. Similarly, we've had individuals request to make a presentation to the board, and they send out the PowerPoint ahead of time, we review it, and then we place them on the agenda, and they can make their, whatever, it can be 20-minute presentation. Just don't want to get in a situation where it could be perceived where, you know, well, you let so-and-so make a 10-minute presentation, but cut me off at two minutes, or vice versa.
So for listening, how do we get at the discussion chair now?
So that is part of another conversation, and, and we've talked about this a little bit, is restructuring the agenda to go back to kind of more similar to how it was before, and have a consent agenda up the top. So things that would be in the consent agenda would not allow any public comment, so the board could move through them relatively quickly, as in, you know, of, of something like the liquor licenses or, you know, 5K routes and things that there's unlikely to be any discussion on the board, you know, basically motion seconds moves through it. So the consent agenda, similarly to the consent calendar at town meeting, will allow, you know, to read through it and then approve them all at once with no discussion from the public. And then we have another section that would have agenda items that allow for public comment. That's where it would be the Chair's discretion, if anybody wanted to comment, you could make the determination whether you wanted to allow comment, open it up before the agenda item was discussed by the board, or after the board was finished discussing, running words in between. And then a listening session would be a, another section on the agenda that would probably generally be empty. However, it would be a placeholder for if there was, you know, the MBTA zoning, that if, you know, we get a lot of people wanting to, you know, express their opinions to the board, then the board can be like, you know, we're going to have a listening session for 30 minutes, 45 minutes at the next meeting on MBTA, you know, everybody, come on out two minutes each, and you can move through up to the 45 minutes, and then you end it.
Sounds good. Everybody's in agreement? Any comments, Ben?
Um, no, I think I'm fine with it. I, I, I don't have a strong feeling on the, sort of the default number of minutes for the listening session, so long as it's at the discretion of the Chair to make it longer, but you cross the board for a particular topic.
All right.
What about, if we're going with two minutes a person for the listening session, I mean, what about allowing a person may speak a second time for one minute at discretion of the Chair? I guess if it's a listening session and you say your thing, but someone else says a thing, and you just want to sort of add an addendum to what you said?
I really think that you need to, if you're going to let one person speak again for one minute, that's with the time constraint, there's a lot of flexibility to be like 30 minutes, 45 minutes total, whatever, two minutes per person, and you're allowed, if time allows, like you get through everybody.
Right.
And you have additional time within that 30 or 45 minutes that's allotted, then everybody's allowed one additional minute that would like to speak.
Yeah.
I don't think you want to get in a situation where, you know, the Chair has to decide who gets to speak and, you know, you know, so you get an immediate rebuttal, and the next person doesn't, but they would like to say something, so you want to be consistent.
I was trying to get where you just finished.
Okay.
Getting us. So if time allows, and if everyone has spoken, who wants to speak?
So do we know where to take this?
Yes, I will. The next meeting will make attempt number one and incorporate in the new agenda, and we'll be open for feedback.
So I move to adopt.
Are we adopting, or are you amending?
We're going to amend it.
I was.
You need to come back for the final though.
As amended.
Before you do that, the title of the...
Yeah, the title is wrong.
Those grant policy? The template, I know. Those templates.
Should we just wait and see it? All right. All right.
Just, just one, sorry, Mr. Chair, just a little further question on the, the text of the listening session. So as written right now, it doesn't really say that the chair can enlarge the period. So I don't know if we wanna have that in there, or if we wanna say rules, two minutes per person.
Actually...
Unless, unless time increased in advance by the chair, or something like that, I don't know.
I raised that point like ten minutes ago.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How do you get listening, how do you get at the discretion of the chair into listening?
Yeah, yeah, right, so we still need some language for that, right?
Well, you say specified on the agenda, and that's the chair's responsibility to set the time blocks, right?
Yes, my understanding is that the chair can, the listening session itself can be, you know, I think the chair, when he sets the agenda, can make it say thirty minutes. But then I think the rules, like what Deirdre brought up, would be two minutes per person, and then if time allows, one minute additional until, you know, the thirty minutes is, is run out.
Yeah.
Is that now what you're getting at?
But I mean, if we're saying, if we're saying, if we're saying it's gonna be specified in the agenda, and it's gonna be sort of topic by topic, then why are we saying five, two, or one minutes below?
Well, I think, 'cause you wanna be consistent with, like, I don't think you wanna have the flexibility within the thirty-minute timeframe to say who gets to go twice and who doesn't. So it's basically like a first come, first served. You go through, you know, everybody who wants to speak once, and then only at that point do you start, do you allow people who wanna make a second comment for one minute until you run out of, until you run out of time. So you're not forced, forced to choose between who can speak again and not.
All right, so we will revisit this again at the next Select Board meeting.
I have a question. Can we set a cadence to the listening sessions so that people are prepared and, and know when it's coming, whether it be, you know, the second meeting of the month, or whether it be every other month, the first meeting, or... I think communication is key, and I think we just need to be able to say to people, hey, this is coming up, and, and with the MBTA and the schools and everything else and the planning boards, there, there's some discussions to be had, so if people can start to prepare for those. I'd hate to have a posted agenda and have them say, oh, wow, it's Thursday, you know, I didn't realize the listening session was on Tuesday.
Yeah, I think it would be a case by case, right, so, you know, items specific, that you may go, like, right now, there's things on the horizon, right, so it might make sense.
Yeah.
If we could get it out there, be like, you know, we, Select Board has three listening sessions planned for the summer.
Right.
You know, second Tuesday of the month, but then we may go through a period of time where there's nothing that really justifies listening sessions. We might fall out of that cadence. So, you know, to your point, maybe similarly to the executive session request to go to a two-week, you know, maybe we set these listening sessions two weeks or a month ahead of time, so it gives us an opportunity to push out through, you know, our avenues of communication far in advance of when the agenda is released.
If it's anything worthy of a listening session, I think that approach makes sense, and we're gonna have a lot of people participating, 'cause we're not gonna do it for something that's not a big deal.
Next meeting, then, for the final draft?
Yeah.
All right. Discussion and potential vote to adopt internal grant procedures policy.
All right, so this was a goal from last year's goal session. So what this attempts to do is put some controls on the grant writing process, right? We don't have a grant writer or any centralized ability to, you know, to write grants, so it really falls on individual department heads and their areas of expertise to seek out and apply for the grants. And what we were seeing, though, is a disconnect between applying for the grant, mandatory funds that might have to be matched to acquire the grant, commitments to future expenditures to maintain whatever, you know, the grant that you received to, to get, get it implemented, and things like that. So this is, and then, so this is to tie it to, you know, we don't wanna make it too cumbersome that department heads are gonna be like, all right, well, I'm just not gonna bother writing a grant because it's a pain in the butt to get all the sign-offs. But this at least requires Jeff Sullard as a finance director, or whoever is the finance director, to sign off as to its, you know, budgetary impacts that we've looked at, you know, whatever we're looking to do, is there gonna be future costs involved in this? Is there any required grant match? You know, are we gonna be able to make the deadlines? Because we, obviously, we can't appropriate a match outside a town meeting, so if the time doesn't allow ourselves to, to appropriate the grant match, then we shouldn't even apply for the grant because we wouldn't be qualified to receive it. And then I can sign off as to form and any future promises that it may place on, on the town. And it also will require Jeff to report annually to the town as, you know, a percentage of, we're gonna stated percentage of expenditures or revenues. You know, we get hundred thousand dollars in grants this year for X, Y, and Z projects. You know, our grants make up, it becomes like, it'll become another revenue source, so to speak, that we don't report on now. Like, do we get grants? Yeah, how many do we get? I don't know. So this will be, you know, centralized out, the projects that they're funding, and maybe how many, maybe how many applications we filled, how many we caught, how the projects that are funded by them.
Comments?
Just one question. Should we have something in here that instructs boards, committees, and commissions as to where they would start the process on, we want a grant for this?
Well, I mean, it's kind of, I guess I'm looking at them to be the resource, because you know, like, as, I use conservation, as, you know, living in the conservation world like Cape or land use, you know, you are network and associations, you know, kind of the source of information for advertising those grants through the different venues that you can acquire them through. But, you know, there is the website we have, we certainly can integrate, you know, so we talk through, so we can integrate resources like the state's website and things like that. You know, as far as with police and fire, they kind of have their own niche of where they go for grants. I don't really do the answer to your question.
No, that's...
But I'm just, I'm kinda looking, I'm always...
Just a little brainstorming, yeah.
Looking for the department heads to be the resource.
Right.
And the appropriate, the boards that they staff, you know, to be able to bring the expertise and resources to be like, you know, we need to acquire bulletproof vests, and, you know, here's through the chief's association's grant, the federal grant that's been pushed out, we should apply for it.
Sounds good. Long needed to formalize that process.
Think it works.
All right.
It's a good start.
It's a good start.
Agreed.
So do we want to adopt it? All right. Need a motion.
I'll do it. Move to adopt the internal grant procedures policy.
Second.
All right, shall we vote? Peter says yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Karen, yes.
Karen, yes.
Ben, yes.
Okay, move on to continued discussion on town goals and objectives. Lot of stuff disappear here, Steve.
Oh, all right, so I think, let me just forward Michelle.
That's great, so, we have it all in front of us.
Ben does.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Ben.
Michelle, who is our attendee?
The row.
Sorry. No, okay.
Just send to a spreadsheet if you can share when you get it in your email. All right, so Deirdre was kind enough to go through her notes and update the, the goal spreadsheet, you know, based on her recollection of the meeting. And so we talked about a lot of things at the meeting, however, we only really got through, didn't really even finish the communication and planning section. So I'd like to propose that we spread this out over a number of meetings, and we focus in tonight, if the board wants to keep going with A and B, try to, you know, try to come to a consensus, at least put some goals on there on the list, and when we come back the next meeting, the idea would be for the board to kind of prioritize at home the goals and objectives for A and B, and then we'll continue to work through the list, and then we do C and D at the next meeting, and then E and F at the following meeting, and then at that, when we, so that will be the second meeting in July. And then at that meeting, we'll have set all of the objectives, they will be ranked by priority level amongst each board member, and then the board can kind of come together at that meeting and be like, all right, you know, based on capacity and resources, here's the ones we wanna prioritize to move forward, and FY twenty-five. Does that sound like a decent plan?
Sounds like a plan. People shaking, nodding their heads. So you wanna start with A? I think Town Hall Newsletter's a good one.
Can I just add a couple of things? So I kept on, I kept some number ones on the sheet for things that we started last year but are still sort of front and center, not near completion yet, so that's why there are some number ones already, as well as a couple of things that seemed obvious. But largely, this is the brainstorming from last year, except for a few things that were mentioned at our workshop this year. So I don't know that this is exhaustive, that's one point. Like, there may be other things that people have in mind that aren't yet represented here, so I think that also needs to be brought forward. So I think we can do it category by category, but also there's some, you know, there's a little bit of overlap in sort of thinking about the big picture, so I guess I would just add that. And so the master plan implementation I put on at the top, because, as I understand it, planning boards approved the master plan, and then that becomes our job, essentially, a big job, to start the implementation this year.
Yep.
So that's why it's at the top.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Well, and obviously website development.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the communication, my two cents is the really, the website, you know, we can add, you know, obviously, a subcategory to that is the E nine-one-one, or, excuse me, code red equivalent, 'cause I think that's gonna be an important tool. We've mentioned about kiosks in Town Hall, or just having an iPad at the public face encounters that are most, see the most traffic during the day to, you know, when you pay any bill, ask the person, you know, you should sign up for our newsletter, just put your email and click the things you wanna hear. And then, I thought Karen had a good idea, that one of our meetings was to, when the board goes to soccer games or whatever, to maybe have that iPad with you, and, you know, just do the outreach, get people signing up, because I mean, the key is really to get them, you know, the more people, the better on there.
Yeah, I said that we could have used things like the community block party and had a table where people can go up and, and use that. I don't know if I would walk around with an iPad at a soccer field.
All right. I thought it sounded good.
But, but, no, I mean, things that are like the, the Little League parades, where you already have a table, and it's already community-based. The COAs, you know, when you have the, the meals that they do once a week, the pickups, things like that, to make sure that we get the, the right audience and a little bit of everybody. My one request for this is I would truly appreciate on the note section, if we have a date. And so it's a little confusing as someone who's coming in this year opposed to wasn't working on it next year, the vendor has been selected, those kind of things. I, I'd like to have a date associated with when the last note was, and so have it just say, you know, June, whatever today is, June eighteenth or whatnot, so at any point in time, we can circle back and say, this said three to six months, as of June eighteenth, it's September first, where are we at? So as far as a, a note taking, that would be helpful. And then the action item, we're also missing here. So things, you know, what is the, what is the next step as far as, and what is the next completion date for that? So three to six months is extremely helpful, but at the same time, what is a date that we do need to circle back as a team?
So the idea last year is that we would revisit the spreadsheet quarterly, and we did that to some extent this year until we got in the thick of the budget season, and then it kind of fell off. So that was the goal, was quarterly to go through it and basically do updates.
My two cents on the communication planning is, one, two, and four are extremely important. I think three is also a number one, but that's something that's a low-hanging fruit. We could do that pretty quickly. So as far as a checkbox, if we can add that to the next meeting and distribute those, we can easily complete that. And it would help serve the community a little bit better from a liaison standpoint.
Open house events feels like a three to me. I don't really understand what project management system align ongoing efforts, what that means.
Yeah, I said that to Steve. There's a few things on the spreadsheet that I don't remember what we meant last year, and that's one of them.
I think that was, we had the long conversation about the financial software that is basically accounting, investments, so forth. And then I think we mentioned that it would have some capabilities to provide information to individual boards, committees, and so forth, but also, I think this came up as project management, you know, okay, we're, don't know example off, so the town wants to do a project, where I thought we talked about how would we have a process that assigned a lead, set schedules, reporting back, costs, and so forth. So whether, you know, per charts or some sort of management, because one-off projects, whether it's, you know, the playground or whatever, there ought to be some assistance from Town Hall, software-wise or process-wise, to help the committees do that, rather than just relying on their own particular individual expertise. So the financial software, does that also have a package that would be management, you know, a project management?
It will track goals and objectives, so, you know, you would be looking to meet the GFBI, which is Government Finance Officers Association, standard, which is usually like a three-year role, so that it'll have, you know, goals and objectives that you set three years ago, you know, would be like the final update. In theory, like over three years, you kind of roll your major objectives, you know, that's kind of how you report on the project, you know, one A, projects... You know, one A, project, whatever design build was done next year, you know, whatever, and then you kind of set, similar to, you know, what Karen said, the, the action items. And then you, you follow them through over, over a number of years.
So I should think, yes, one, two are the, the big ones. And then some of the others we could pick up as available. Town Hall Newsletter, you know, I think we'll see if we actually get a town newspaper in August. So the format and where that prints out in, might wait another month or so. But certainly ought to have an open house event, I don't think we're having a with a changeover, I don't think the Wana Museum is, is there going to be a summer fair? I haven't heard about that yet, so perhaps the town ought to have a holiday, at least staff get-together, or staff and officials.
Well, what I had suggested last time was we, we have the staff party figured out. This would be to add an event that's open to the public and to our board and committee members to bring people into Town Hall. And the public can come and meet any of us if they want to, so extend it out a little bit.
Be careful what you wish for.
Well, hopefully at the holidays it'll be friendly. Hot chocolate and cookies.
Okay.
Can we combine that with the ceremony? Or do we have new police and fire that we can do, that would bring more people in? From a ceremony perspective? I like the idea, but milk and cookies might not get the folks in here, but if we have something that's going to be something that they can engage in, I don't know, maybe.
It's also to try to tie it to the holidays and the village thing, that the Wana Museum and the church, and yeah, so that basically all four of us.
Yep.
Hopefully would do it on the same day, but if the timing works, it could be a ceremony.
Yeah.
Some kind of something.
Some kind of something.
All right. Are we done communication planning?
Can I request that we add number three to the list for agenda items for next time?
Yes.
Gary, who is heading up the newspaper? Who's the person in charge of that?
I think it's the same person that had Ipswitch.
B, human resource planning and development, and I'm glad to see one for recognition program.
Well, we just started to talk about it last time, I think I offered to research possibilities. So I'm happy to do that.
Quarterly or something, who knows?
On, on B two, operation instructions for each department slash job guides. So I mean, we've made some progress in that general area with the employee handbook and also it's more geared towards boards and so on, the roles and responsibilities that Gary has worked on. Are there, are there more granular operations manuals that we still would want to make a priority? Or, or not, based on kind of where we are with the employee handbook and. For example.
Well, I think this came out of, this is a little bit deeper, that in the past, individual departments, whether, you know, assessing or building whatever, I think they have progressed hugely over the last couple of years. But this came about that, uh, back then, you know, departments, people came into the department and said, where is the OIs, the operating instruction, and there was no documentation, especially as we saw four years ago in the finance department. So I think that one, at that level is working very well. I think that, uh, you know, the OIs that, as an example, that the Veterans Committee came up with, that that's something that we ought to offer up as an example to the other committees to document how they actually operate year to year.
Great.
It's more, it sounds like it's more the select board, the select board supporting, urging departments or committees and supporting them and drafting their own, um, OIs or SOPs. As opposed to. You know, the select board or the town administrator, or, or Joe, for example, taking the laboring aura and a lot of that, that's more, at least as an initial draft, it should be done by that. As the example you gave Gareth, the Veterans Committee, where they, they came up with that, and they were obviously the right body to come up with their own SOPs.
So I think there's two categories there, right, there's, one part of that discussion was about employees in Town Hall, so basically to assist in cases of turnover. And to basically have it written down, the how-tos, the OIs, and some, some positions could benefit from job guides. You know, I think that's for you and your team, Steve, to think about where it would be useful to have job guides as a how-to to help with transition. And then the other set is to look at, or to request or suggest that committees potentially take this on. Like the veterans did the operating procedures, when I was on FinCom, I wrote an onboarding guide to help people get oriented to what FinCom does, so, so I think some. You know, one or the other or both might apply to various committees, but basically, how do we do better in onboarding and dealing with transitions?
I mean, I think at a bare, you know, at a bare minimum, some, some roles, as you pointed out, don't really lend itself too well to like taking screenshots and, you know, you click on this tab, and then you enter this number, and then you click on this tab, right? So that's like finance all day long, like that stuff, you could literally come in and you just flip through the page, next step, next step, on some of that. You know, but I think at a, at a minimum would, you know, everybody could do this, and we've kind of tried to do it to some extent as we've built out the town calendar, as we lead up to, um, town meeting. And we've expanded it each year, including more and more boards and committees, uh, and departments to be like, all right, you know, here's. Here's like your year, in a, in a, you know, looking ahead, here's what the things you need to get done in a year, so it would just be helpful. You know, I know just myself being relatively new is when, you know, when you first come in, it's like, well, what, what do you do in January? What do you do in February? What do we got to be aware of? What's the budget cycle, what's that, like all that stuff, you know, we kind of take it for granted, but none of that stuff existed two years ago, and like we worked hard to kind of put these processes back in place, and then, you know, evolve them further in the second year. And when we were building out, you know, what was like a few cells in the calendar to, you know, we got something like eighty dates or something like that, across a number of, of committees and departments and things, so I know that would. Certainly a calendar of, you know, maybe to start there, to be like, you know, what do you, you know, when does, Michelle, when do you send out the letter to boards, committees, and department heads for the annual report, and when do that have to be sent to the printer? When do we, you know, do we use a printer like that?
So calendar by role, essentially.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the board wants to evolve in that level of granularity where, you know, type your password into software, is this how you, you know, you type in your check for cash turnover? You know what I mean?
I mean, I think that's for you to determine, yeah.
I agree.
At what level of granularity is useful, with the goal of we're increasing our procedures to help with transition and turnover, to make it easier.
Yeah, and I mean, part of it is, part, like a small community is very tough with turnover, because a lot of times you have departments of one.
One.
Right, so like the finance director and town account. That's really, that's it, you're the only one that does the journal entries, you're the only one that does the books, you're the only one that runs the audit. So it's when you come into a new community, and you're just, and there's no institutional knowledge.
Right.
You're like, it just takes a year or two to kind of figure it out, and it's very difficult to be like, well, you know, you have to, you know, on Monday you do this, on Tuesday you do that, it's like, some of these roles where it's like, well, yeah, an assistant, and that's similar to why we put Jen in there, and she's cross-training, and we're trying to build like these plans and things in place, not just documenting what you do, but to be have. You know, if the finance director leaves, you got the assistant, uh, account payable. If they leave, you got the finance director, right, so hopefully there's not a situation in time where they're both.
Creates some redundancy, but I think that's exactly the rationale for where you would want some kind of documentation or job guide.
Yep.
Because when you're dependent on one person in a department and they're not there, everybody, no one knows what to do, right? So, so that to me would point to where.
At that level, right, I like that clerk level, I think it's tough at county, the county finance director level, as to what. You know, kind of chart out their own unique way, or they all like. When you're maintaining a chart of accounts, doing your journal entries and stuff like that, I feel like every accountant I've run into that has like their own system, so like to have to like explain that might be challenging.
Can you build into their annual review process, like a best practice maintenance for each individual?
Yeah, I mean, that would be exactly what we did. It would be their.
You already did that, or you would do that?
No, it would be exactly what, if this was a goal for the board this year, when we sit down to establish goals and objectives, that would be a goal and objective for everybody. I'm just trying to get a feel of how granular.
Well, because then you, if you have somebody who's injecting to it.
Well, why don't you let them decide?
The individuals?
Yeah. How granular, I'm responding to him.
I think it's a management decision, right, as to where this would be useful and where it's less useful. Again, with the overarching goal be how do we smooth these transitions and put us in a better position if transitions, if and when, I mean, they do occur, right, that's the goal.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Granularity is up to you.
Is my point was you can only do so much. Like, I don't think it's going to cure the pain that a small community feels when a major.
Yes.
Player leaves, because there's just almost no redundancy in a lot of situations.
Right.
As much as you try, you try to document, you come in, you got your binder, and but still, somebody coming in that doesn't know anything from a hole in the wall, and opening up a binder, and kind of trying to figure it out. But I do agree that, you know, certainly documentation is helpful, just kind of playing both sides.
I mean, I think.
He agreed.
Sort of, yeah.
He did. I just heard him agree.
Take it and run.
Yeah.
No, I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying to, you know, I just wanted, you know, expectations that if, you know, if somebody leaves, that I could, you know, DPW director, finance director, I mean, Belinda, I mean, it's going to be, you feel it, because you know, that would be done.
It's big, yes, and this isn't going to change that in its entirety, but I think.
It certainly can help.
For you, as our primary manager, to think about where this would be useful, and maybe there's like a prioritization list. I don't expect you would do all of them this year.
Right.
But like, are there, I don't know, top three that lend themselves to be, to have guides associated or some kind of documentation? And then you recommend that as a starting point, see if they're useful.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't know what MOU contract integration was, is that relevant anymore?
So, I mean, I think what that was, was achieved, it was that we had outstanding MOUs that hadn't been integrated into the contracts yet. So some communities, you, I mean, you say with turnover and stuff, it's easy, or to just. When you're ending, when you end your negotiation process and you arrive at an agreement, you generally draft an MOU and then you, and then all parties will sign the MOU, and then you work on contract integration, which is a whole, sometimes a whole another negotiation, because now the terms you sign in the MOU, you know, impact the contract in ways that once the other may not have anticipated or agreed to. Uh, so we've worked, we had a number of MOUs that we integrated with all the contracts. So now we're working off actual contracts, not. Not a contract that was dated six years ago, and then two MOUs that have amended the contract since.
So this is completed, essentially.
But it's, it is going to come up again, it's almost like a.
Oh, definitely.
It's almost always there, because now we're in, we're negotiating with three unions. When I go arrive at MOU's, the select board will sign them. And then we work to integrate them into the contracts.
Okay.
Contracts come back to the, to the select board. Right, so what we were in a situation, why it got on here, I think, was because we had a number of years. So we had to integrate two years or, or two cycles worth of MOUs into a contract that was six years old.
Yeah, okay, so it's part of a routine now.
Part of a routine, but this, the reason why I think it arrived to, it, it was on the goal was because it was so.
Behind.
Behind.
Got it.
And it was a problem, because you're looking at it, you're being like, all right, well, what is, all right, so we agreed to this last three cycle, again, what was it, six years ago, like what are we going off of?
Right. And what was management information systems evaluation, anybody remember?
Actually, I don't remember, I have no idea.
Gary?
I think that was the same or like the project management, to see if there was a software out there that would assist in projects or, you know, getting more data, because I think we had talked about the the financial software is kind of backwards-looking, right, it tells you what you've done, but the management information was, do we have any software that can help us, you know, what if going forward, or, you know, do we want to do project A or B, and what's the cost and timelines and so forth? But perhaps that's a little aggressive or too big a scale for what we really need, which is depending on individuals.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I mean.
Ask Jeff.
Yeah, well, part of the budget document will be. I mean, part of it's forward-looking, part of it's like, here's our objectives that we've set in the coming year. Here's, you know, here's what we set last year and how we did with achieving them. And here's what we set two years ago and how we've done with achieving them, so it's kind of a mix, but certainly not as granular as what we were explaining.
Now we, do we agree that that can come out?
Yes.
Me too.
Okay, good.
What are we down to?
Uh, just a couple, so recognition program and the operation instructions for each department would become more of a review the potential for.
Right.
But are we adding in operating instructions suggested for the other committees? As, as our goal, to try to urge them to get that done?
And send the Veterans Committee.
Book to them, yeah, because, you know, in the past, we've had several committees that were like. Well, we have eight empty slots on the.
Yeah, right.
On the cultural council, you know, so it's like.
Or on COA alone, yeah.
Yeah, so COA, how's it supposed to work, you know, so. And I think that's something that each little committee can pull together over the year.
So maybe we suggest it as an onboarding slash SOP exercise, depending on what committees think is relevant to them. Again, with the goal of creating documentation to aid in transition and turnover and consistency. And the first one, review town's administrative structure. I don't remember exactly what we had wanted to do.
I took that, I took that as, um, similar to, we discussed the, uh, was it Tuesday? That is Tuesday, last week. Just trying to see if it's in here again. Like the, uh, you know, like a Collins Center or Massachusetts looking at, like administratively, like government, well, I guess it could be more governmental. Town's governmental structure.
Yeah.
Charter is, you know, appropriately structured, should it be a town name, or should it, whatever.
So that's one of the places that overlaps with other categories, but it's come up the last couple of years, I know when I was on FinCom, we had recommended a DLS review. Now I think less on the financial side, but more on the government structure side to see either Collins Center or DLS. to see either Collins Center or DLS, to take a look at where we're at and then suggest things that we haven't thought of and particularly to tie it also with one of our other categories, which was to think about a town charter, whether we need one, should have one, should go there. And I think DLS aids in that thinking and suggesting, yes, you should, or no, it doesn't make sense, or why and why. So that potential review could tie in a few of these aspects.
Maybe we keep it on there, but lower its priority or?
It's, it is also a six-month like waiting period typically to get in their queue. So if we decide to do it, we should start getting in the queue, basically, or it lags another whole year.
I should think to a certain extent is, the question goes to Steve and our own assessment is, have we done all the internal changes like the HR employee handbook and so forth? Are we ready to have someone come in and look and, or other stuff that we know that we ought to get done and get it in place first and then get the inspectors in?
Well, I guess I think you talked about two different things. One would be more like operational, to look at operations, and then the other one would be more governmental structure.
Structure.
And delegation of duties and authorities, sort of really primarily the executive select board and, you know, the town administrator, I think, is to, you know, who is responsible for personnel, who is responsible for procurement, who signs the contracts. So right now, we have kind of practice, but it's written down, some of it's written down someplace, but I don't think any of it's like really binding, like a charter would be adopted by the residents.
And that's one piece of it, but, and it's been a couple of years since I read these, but they would suggest things like, we recommend you go from elected to appointed town clerk, right? So some of the things that we've already done, but those are typical recommendations. I just think it would be useful for us to see now where we're at and if there are other things they suggest. And you, you don't have to implement anything that they raise, it's basically a suggestion.
Right.
It's to, to help us, it's not.
And it's pretty thorough if you look at some of the other town reports or their reports on certain towns.
Right.
You can see that they look at all aspects.
I think they are useful. I mean, we could circulate some samples again to refresh our memories.
I'd like to see some examples, I think, that'd be helpful to me.
Me too.
I can do that.
Anything else in HR?
I think we're done. Well, we know what we're doing. We have a plan. Okay, hey, so we're going to move on from goals, okay? And just a question, Gary? These were all sitting out there?
Yeah, so maybe it's back under, A, the communications policy and stuff. So we've talked a little bit about the electric sign and stuff, so that was just.
Share that with you.
The town clerk provide that stuff saying, these are all things that is on the town counter, but is actually not.
Not.
Town stuff, so perhaps we.
What about WVIS?
It's a private.
It's a private, yeah.
Private entity.
I mean, I think it goes the same for the website.
Yeah.
Like every one rule.
You know, one rule for every place.
So she, is she saying we should remove it from out there as well?
Well, she says, you know, the stuff just shows up and, you know.
I think she just wants guidance.
Yeah, guidance.
To the website, like what can we can't allow because people come in and they're like, oh, can I put my flyer here? Can I advertise? It's like, well, you know, they're helping cats and puppies and you're like, well, it sounds great to me.
I love cats and puppies.
But do you know what I mean? But then you're, but then you're kind of, but then you don't, then you open up, you're like, oh, whoa, like not that.
So we need to have a sign there to take a little pressure?
Well, I think you just need to define on all media, whether it's website, electric sign, you know, tell the committees that if it's private entity or non-government organization that, you know, there's a strict boundary there that you can say it's a great idea and it's really neat, but you should not be using municipal resources to support it or display it.
You know, one thing that came up, and this has come up a few times over and I've kind of just done case by case basis, and I allowed this, this, this example that I'm going to give was the, there was a water conservation, I don't know if it was a group or push to like conserve water, no, protect your wetlands. So it was on the whiteboard because it was the Conservation Commission requested it, but it wasn't, it was like the Conservation Commission supported it, but it wasn't a Conservation Commission.
Well, I think that's what the.
You know what I mean? So that becomes like, so it is like a workaround, I get this question a lot, it's like, well, if I get the Affordable Housing Trust to support this group or this initiative, then can we put it on the whiteboard? Because now it's supported by the town of Wenham, like Board of Committee. I'm just saying that there's, like those, like a little bit of gray areas that we want to kind of iron out. I don't know what the right thing to do is, but I just say, you know, there's, those are the types of questions that I get as to, you know, should it just be literally, if it doesn't have the town of Wenham stamp on it, it's, you know, literally a town of Venom, town of Wenham event, then it doesn't go, you know, I'm not saying yes or no, it just literally just.
I think, you know, it's just.
Some gray areas.
I would say that we need to have a policy so that, you know, both town administrator and boards and committees out there understand exactly where the boundary line is as to, you know, like we saw previously, you know, who gets to use the town seal, you know? Who can a committee approve an event for the town that doesn't get higher level review by the select board or the town administrator? So, you know, and we can talk which way or where the boundary line is, but I think, you know, you know, talking to the town clerk and to some committees that, you know, as you say, there's a lot of gray area there. And as we saw with KP Law, they go, whoa, you know? Whether it's flags or signboards, we really need to make it black and white so the public understands.
Right. Yeah, and from a staff perspective, we'll just want to support anything you folks want, which is definitely, you know, it's just, it's not the need of, you know, an email or anything from the select board, just through, you know, like just what do you want? And we'll be happy to say yes or no.
So we need to write something. We need a policy.
So add that to communications?
Yes.
Well, it should probably go in the manual, right? The communications policy.
Yeah, right, I guess, yeah, we can integrate it all. So that will be, I mean, then maybe we can just do an update.
Version 2.0 already.
Yeah.
Right, yep, that's it.
Same year.
Yeah, hopefully our aspirations will be moved to current communication tools.
But I guess don't be careful not to conflate, conflate issues. Like the Conservation Commission, I'm struggling with that one because if they're saying protect the wetlands, I mean, that is their purview, that's their entire purview.
Well, yeah, exactly, and that's why I allowed it, but then it's kind of like, what, I think it was the, one of the watersheds or something was pushing it up. So, you know, would we allow the watershed, the Ipswich River watershed to advertise on that?
No.
No?
I thought it was just the commission.
Well, it was something, it was like a, it was a, there was something going on through one of the watersheds, I think. Like that's what we wanted to push out, like that's what, where it stemmed from. Kate was like, we, you know, we want to put this out there, but if the board supports it, can we? But certainly a gray area.
But we didn't do accord. So when you.
What's that?
But we didn't do things for accord.
Well, they're clearly a nonprofit and has no connection to the town.
Yeah.
Again.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So it's two steps. I think we need the policy and then we can work into the details, but, you know.
Yeah, town entities.
Yeah.
But I'm saying like if the Conservation Commission wants to say protect the wetlands, that's I think within their purview to do that, not for the Ipswich River Wildlife Association, but Watershed Association, sorry. But I know they had discussions, I was there for one of them, about protecting the wetlands and putting signs. So I think it's not necessarily for someone else, that's exactly their realm. So anyway.
Gary, do you want, do you want to try and together?
All right.
Practice?
Okay.
And I think we should go conservative on this.
And I'll talk to a couple, some of the boards, committees, see what they would like, not on the specifics, but, you know, what sort of guidance they feel they need or want as well.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else to discuss?
Schedule? Are we good through August?
They're all on, they're all on the website.
Oh, the dates are up?
Through September.
Yeah, we did them last time, right?
So. Go ahead, Ben.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a mention of minutes because as you see, there are none to, for us to reprove tonight. So lest you think that the new clerk has completely dropped the ball, I did want to give an update that the last two draft minutes that were prepared by Minutes Solutions, which were the May 7th and May 21st minutes, yesterday and today, I, I sent my edits to those minutes, to Michelle. So I think those are in the pipeline for, you know, for our review and consideration for the next meeting. And then hopefully also before that next meeting, I'll be able to make initial edits, if any, to Catherine's minutes, which, which I've had for some time. She sent them very promptly after the last meeting, but hopefully I'll be able to move those along and then of course we have this meeting. So at the next meeting, there should be, I would think, at least three sets of minutes to, for us to look at. I know that's a very exciting development for 11 minutes.
Well, I think in about a month or two, you're going to be realizing that you need to take very good care of Catherine Tenfling.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm very happy that we're all back together.
Okay, folks.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
At 8:33.
Okay, Beau? Peter, yes?
Deirdre, yes?
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes?
Ben, yes.
Good night, Ben.
Good night, Ben.
Thanks, everybody.
Enjoy the island.
Take care. Thanks. Take care.